Order, roll call.
Butler.
Here.
Essing?
Here.
McNabb?
Here.
Seaman?
Here.
Knopf singer?
Here.
Fisher?
Here.
Warren?
Here.
All right, pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right, visitors and correspondence.
Do you want to say anything?
No.
I don't feel like I have any rights. If no visitors and correspondence, we'll move on to reports. Pledge of allegiance to meetings report.
You have a copy of the care report and the OSS report in your agenda.
Any questions or comments on that? Not in enrollments?
There you go. All right, so as you can see, our enrollment. Okay, so we're at fourteen twenty-three. I know that last time I think we were at fourteen twenty-four, so we're in total one student moved out. Now, we will see that drop in January due to early graduates. Other than that, we seem to be holding pretty stable right now, so.
And it's helpful that you broke it down to the AM and PM teams. I've been who did that before. Looks like it's pretty evenly balanced.
Yep. Things are going pretty well over there right now, so.
Okay, any questions or comments on enrollment? If not, the financial report, Dr. Sanders.
Okay, let me get to that here. As I was taking a look at our revenue received, we've received most of our general levy, and so that is good. There's only two point one percent of that budgeted amount that's remaining. The state funds keep flowing through. We're at thirty-six percent of that. We should be right around forty-two percent if we are tracking just based off of months out of the year. And so revenue is coming in as expected. When we cross on over to the expense report, like I said earlier, we should be at about forty-two percent of the way through our budgeted expenses. So payroll is underneath that, which is great because that is, that accounts for ten million dollars. A couple other important aspects, the retirement insurance is a little bit less, and we'll talk a little bit about that here in a moment. And then also, I want to note, you know, last year, the out-of-district tuition cost, that was pretty significant. We're tracking at about thirty-six percent, or, I'm sorry, thirty-two percent for the budgeted expenses for that. So that's really, that's a good number, and we saw how that was last year. Moving on to the investment insurance report, I brought that on up here. The investments were sitting at, we're not, we're not making any money on, no one's making money on investments right now, which is pretty sad, but hey, it's to be expected with the economy and where interest rates are right now. But the biggest news is our insurance report, and so I'm going to spend just a little bit of time. Last year, we had a total spend of two point six five million dollars, and that was through October thirty-first. This year, we're at one point four million, so that is a huge difference in our expense, and this is why, when you take a look at what we've spent here recently, I don't know if we'll ever see numbers like this again, where we only have one month that has eclipsed what we've taken in in revenue. So we're looking really good, and when we get to the board reports, there'll be some additional information on the insurance committee. So that being said, that's all I have from the financial side.
Anyone have any questions or comments on that? All right, thank you, Dr. Sanders. Ward committee report? I think we have maybe three? And a report out on, I guess, the curriculum that's on that.
I suggest that since we're going to be voting to approve part of that committee's report, we keep that portion so we can give more details prior to that vote. It's under the next page, I believe.
The dual credit course, yeah.
That was the main thing we did. Anything else that you want to add, but just general conversation?
Just the COVID update and just review some of the curriculum, implications of COVID curriculum, so, which, you know, will come up more as we go into later months.
Okay. What else? Finance, Matt?
Finance, we met with David Pastoreus from Midstate, who's, they do our bonds, and he introduced an idea that we're going to vote on later here, so you'll get, like Laurie said, we'll get more information then, but in short, it's just a good opportunity to save the taxpayers some money with no cost to us. And then there was the levy update and the twenty-two budget we discussed, and then SRO, which is also on tonight's agenda. That's it.
Do we have one other? I just see insurance.
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 That person did it for us, so.
Right, do we got, we don't vote on the minutes from insurance? I don't see that.
No.
Okay. Anything else or questions on any of that? It's on, we're going to cover most of it later. All right, discussion and informational items. In-person remote learning update.
Okay, so we have made it through to December. I will tell you, right now, our numbers are pretty stable. We managed to navigate through the November swell in COVID cases. It's, I'll tell you, probably the most difficult thing we ran into in November was just the impact on staff because we had a number of quarantines, and not just COVID cases, but we had quarantines and we had cases where schools shut down and some of our staff members who were parents needed to stay home with kids. And so we just found ourselves scrapping to get subs, but we were able to pull it off. We didn't have to shut down at any point during November for anything COVID-related. We kept right on clicking through, so. And now we find ourselves in December, about a week and a couple days away from Christmas break, so things are going fairly well. The plan itself has worked very well. We tested out a couple of remote learning days last week. We decided to give it a shot and we wanted to put a few things in place. One of the things we talked about is if we're going to have to go full school remote, we want a synchronous session. So we took the morning session and asked every student that could possibly attend to attend, and we had great numbers of attendance. Our teachers taught directly through Google meets, and it worked out pretty well. The feedback we received from the teachers was positive. A lot of it is still, you know, we still prefer face-to-face, we get more accomplished, but as far as a remote setting goes, this worked out pretty well. So we do have a fallback plan if something happens where we have to shut down for the amount of time. When I say shut down, I mean transfer over to a remote type session. We do have, I believe now, a good plan in place on how to address that. So that's a plus. Other things that we've seen, you know, we are where we are with athletics. We're just kind of waiting on guidance. I don't believe that we'll hear or see anything until after the break, and maybe in January, we'll have a little bit better understanding of where everybody sits with winter athletics. At this point in time, with the mitigations that are in place, things are really tight. So the way that coaches are able to work with kids is more of a one-on-one, in-the-gym type scenario. So basically, what ends up happening is you have a kid at each basket and a coach watching each kid in the gym. So, and they're kind of talking through things with them and coaching them from a distance. So that happens, it's a way to stay connected with the kids, and so far, so good. We'll probably continue, we'll continue that, that'll happen a little bit over break just because you don't want to lose touch with these students. This has been very tough on them, you know, especially our athletes are suffering from the loss of the things that they love to do. So whatever we can do to provide them support and provide them an opportunity to get in and do some things, that's great. Now, on the other hand, we have other, we have other opportunities, like speech, for example. Speech was in a virtual competition over the weekend and over the weekend before, and our team is actively competing, so that's been good. We've done it, we've had our students do a couple of virtual art shows, and they've been able to compete that way. And so we just continue down this path, trying to figure out what it is that we can do to provide some sense of normalcy for kids. One of the, one of the funnest things that I think kids have been able to do in a while is they did adore that early competition, and it was a lot of fun. The kids had a lot of fun with that, and it was nice to see them, you know, decorating the doors and trying to get a good feel out there. You could, you could feel the energy level up a little bit. This week, we have a number of dress-up days, like spirit days that are going on. Today was pajama day, and we saw a number of kids in pajamas. So that was, that's all in all, it's been good, and here we are in December, roll call.
Dr. Freeman, I don't know if this is on the webpage, I looked for it earlier, but I know since all the athletics, which IHSA has moved, do they have it on their webpage now of like, when is basketball, wrestling, football, I mean, because now there's like, there's not winter, right, I guess, and then it's going to be spring, spring, summer?
No, they don't have it on the webpage because none of that is established.
I just wondered if they had anything.
The best way to put it is everything is in a state of flux right now. You know, I think they're still standing by their original concept of when they think the fall sports will play in late winter, early spring, but even that is up for discussion at this point. So it's, yeah, there's really not many dates up there because we just don't know.
Well, one parent had asked me, some of our coaches are multiple sports coaches, and how that's going to play out, and I said, I didn't think that they had the schedule figured out, so I just wondered if.
My understanding is we should know a lot more within a couple weeks into January. There's a big HSA meeting coming up at that point in time, where they're going to have to make some decisions, some more permanent decisions. That's my understanding at least, but for the time being, we're still just riding the waves.
Thanks, I just didn't know if you had information that wasn't up there.
I wish I could give you more, but right now, it's just tough.
So ideally, they won't all happen at the same time?
That's the point.
If your student who participates in a spring sport and a fall sport, if they all happen at the same time, you have to choose, and like you were saying, the coach will be torrented.
I think the later this goes, the more likely the chance that there will be overlapping of sports. Okay.
Then we can't control that, no. Anything else? All right. District fifty-one and fifty-two requests withdrawal leadership from the WTESC.
So our original contract with the districts was from nineteen eighty-six, and in both cases, having talked to the superintendents, they both believe that they want to move their services in-house because they feel like they can provide better for their students' needs, and that's the gist of the two letters that they have. We kind of knew this was coming because they made overtures to this over the last month, so it's here now, so.
Do we foresee any impact on our program? And do I, do I also understand District fifty plans to remain with us?
District fifty does plan to remain with us at this point. Comparatively speaking, if we see any impact, it'll probably be more tied to cost increases for next year. I don't know that they'll be real, real significant. When we looked at it, it wasn't likely suddenly or shoulder in a heavy burden because of that.
But it will bring more competition for areas of special education personnel that are very difficult to come by, even when we were blended as one district under the special ed program, because I remember being a little bit like in school and talking to some of the psychologists when I was volunteering, and they're really few and far between.
They are, they are. The township has had an opening for a psychologist now for a year and a half, so.
And then we kind of filled a hole a little before that, didn't we, with kind of dividing services to try to cover everything?
We did, we did, and then this year, we ended up hiring an organization that provides telepsychs, and so we have psychologists who are calling in for some of our meetings now, so.
And another thing that I prize in the past when we were able to do it, which I don't seem to be quite able to do this way, since we aren't a unit district, we do work closely together to try to do what we can as a unit district, even though we know we're a dual district. And I understand that there were personnel, people in special ed, who would follow students as they came from the eighth grade into the high school, with some continuity in who they worked with. Was that the case? There was at one time, I don't know if it is today.
Well, we ended up in a position where each district ended up having a social worker assigned to the district. So the way that operated was through the psychologists. When we had our three psychs, the three psychologists, each one was assigned to one of the feeder districts. So you had fifty, fifty-one, fifty-two, but then all three of them were assigned to the high school. So yes, there was some consistency in the way that it flowed into the high school. This year's been a little different because we're down to two psychs due to a resignation last year, and the telepsychs are fitting in the best they can. Basically, we're dividing time between the two types of psychologists that are working for the township now. So that did provide some fluency. We will continue to try to do things with those districts, like orientations to the high school and an opportunity for some of those students to come in and get their bearings before the end of the year. So some of the eighth graders will end up coming over just to kind of get a feel for our programs, get to know people a little bit, and we start to break the ice that way as we get closer to the end of the year. And I'm sure we'll continue that process, even though, in both cases, both districts have expressed that they want to continue to work together as a township as much as possible, so.
So that will take effect next fall when schools open?
Next fall.
Hunter Freeman on that note of the effective date. The letter from fifty-two has a 2020 termination date in it. I'm sure that's just a mistake, I just want to make sure our records are.
Yeah, they're, they're looking for June thirtieth of 2021, yes.
Okay, okay, thank you.
No worries, I think that was just the typo.
Oh, that was my assumption, just wanted to clarify, right, thank you.
So all of their, all of these contracts, all of the employees expire June thirtieth, is that right? Are there any that we're going to have to concern about that are worth, that are longer than one year?
Currently, our director has a three-year contract, and she's in the middle of that, but everybody else is on a basic contract. Truth of the matter is, because they were hired, some of them are tendered. However, we'll have to go through a RIF process if resignation is done approved, which I think right now, the other two districts, the two districts that are pulling out are reviewing for positions, and we'll kind of let, we'll see how things shake out. They may shake out with violence at the meeting to do any type of reduction in force.
But because they're withdrawing from the agreement, if the contracts are still good with us?
Yes.
Whoever remains, us and fifty, whoever remains in there?
Yes.
Is this the end of the legal part of it, or is there more that comes with the establishment of the township? I mean, how binding is it?
Once this is approved, that's, it'll be, it'll be done, yeah.
Anything else on that?
Well, I guess, so that's something that will approve.
Yeah, each, each board has to.
So are we looking, what are you thinking is on my mind for that?
Oh, January.
Thanks.
We, and I think all districts have to do this, which means fifty-one has to approve fifty-two withdrawing, fifty-two has to approve fifty-one withdrawing. So that has to occur with all of the districts within the township, so.
Is that right? Because how would they approve them? I mean, they're independent of us, we can't be of no control over what they do, right?
The agreement itself is somewhat binding, so in order for this to happen, please.
We have to allow them out of the, out of this, is another question.
We would have the psychologist, how many social workers?
Two.
Two social workers.
What we would probably retain from the township would be a social worker, and D fifty, a social worker here at the high school, a psychologist, and a director.
And a director, okay.
And we also have two secretaries, okay? So one of them would remain as the township secretary. We do have an open position here at the high school, so we can move somebody in that open position.
All right, if not, do we have any other discussion items?
Yes. For those of you who not have the opportunity to watch, it's a wonderful one. Make sure you get to it. I watched it the other night. There is a fifteen-dollar charge, but it will be up and reviewing through the twenty-fourth, and it was just wonderful. Lots of, lots of good, good entertaining students. I, my thought was, they were doing the radio production, you know, that kind of thing, and kids would go back and forth. My thought was, I can't believe how they run into each other when, you know, they're so busy. But it was really entertaining, so I highly recommend it.
Which is another example of how the teachers have been so creative about the kids, still be able to do what they are used to doing.
Most definitely, never mind.
Is there a link on the webpage?
Yes. It's on there, and then it takes you to where you need to go, and then it goes to a broadway or something.
I'll cover that.
Actually, the night it came out, our families had already watched it, so it was fun, yeah. It's a great job.
There's so few arts available now, it'd be great when you get to see some of their art.
Well, they did a really nice job of getting instrumental music and vocal music in, so there's, it's the musical skills.
And even ballet, yes, yes.
Some dance, you ready, huh?
And actually, it looks like I skipped over the SRO contract, twenty-two, twenty-two. Are we voting on that later?
No, this is information that investment, it'll be next month. So the request from the city was a two point five percent increase in salary. That's pretty much in line with what we would expect, so.
I think that is, if I remember correctly, in the newspaper, I think that's what the raise was for the kids to get some point placement.
All right, do we have any other others? All right, now we're going to move on to the consent agenda. And on the consent agenda, we have seven point one-one regular board meeting minutes from November ninth, 2020, seven point one-two executive session meeting minutes, November ninth, 2020, seven point one-three curriculum meeting, meeting minutes from November twenty-third, 2020, seven point one-four finance committee meeting minutes, December second, 2020. Of course, we do have the others. And then we have the bills and approving the mid-year, three-year, and five-year graduates. So do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda and resolution seven point one, seven point two, and seven point three, and recommend?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Any questions or comments? All right, we have a roll call.
Seaman?
Yes.
McNabb?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Warren?
Yes.
Essing?
Yes.
Knopf singer?
Yes.
Butler?
Yes.
Motion passes. Onto eight action items. Personnel, the first is to approve the leave of absence from Katie Cortez as a math teacher. Can I put all this together?
One.
All right, so do we have a motion to approve the leave of absence from Katie Cortez as a math teacher?
I move.
Second.
Motion second, any questions or comments?
As you can see, it's a twelve-day request, and I can approve up to ten days, so that's why it showed up as a void.
Roll call.
Knopf singer?
Yes.
Butler?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
McNabb?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Warren?
Yes.
Essing?
Yes.
All right, number two, certified employment. I need a motion to approve the employment of Carol Wilson as a long-term substitute teacher.
So.
Second.
Carol will do a great job.
Don't let anybody go. All right, roll call, please.
Fisher?
Yes.
Warren?
Yes.
Essing?
Yes.
Knopf singer?
Yes.
Butler?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
McNabb?
Yes.
All right, motion passes. Number three, non-certified employment, approve employment of Cory lines as a maintenance supervisor. I have a motion to approve Cory's. So moved.
Second.
Second. We talked about this.
I'll hit the brief overview of this. We have discussed this in facilities, we talked about it a little bit last week with the, or last month, sorry, not last week, with the flow chart for maintenance. The whole purpose for this is to be able to put him into a position to where we have an extra supervisory hand for events because we can't keep running here indefinitely, you know, so they can at least split up some of the duties. But another big part of the reason for him being in a supervisory position is with HVAC, there are times you come in, especially now that it's getting cooler. If he finds a boiler down, he may have to call other maintenance workers over to help him, and we want somebody in a supervisory capacity who can actually do that. So this has been discussed for a little while, just to provide the extra overtime that can be given, we're on expendable work. And also free up some time for Ryan so that he can help us with some planning and some time that he might have to spend in front of a computer, kind of, some of the administrative work that you have to do, and sometimes that has to happen in the computer, so.
Cory did a great job, and Ryan was a strong person.
Yep.
Any other comments? All right, roll call.
Warren?
Yes.
Essing?
Yes.
Knopf singer?
Yes.
Butler?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
McNabb?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
All right, number two, approve the dual credit course, which is leave as sociology one as an ICC dual credit course, I believe for next year.
Yes.
So do I have a motion to approve sociology one as ICC dual credit course for this year of 2021 and twenty-two for the year? So moved.
Okay, now we have a motion to reset.
Right now, we can discuss.
This, this was brought to us by the social studies department. They already had a sociology one class. They found that with a little bit of work, they could make it overlap nicely with ICC's curriculum, provide another social studies type credit for students who are enrolled here, where they could do the dual credit process, which is outstanding. We really do like the way it works. You know, I think right now, ICC charges a student fifty dollars, and they end up with three credit hours. I don't know that you can find three credit hours for that rate anywhere else. That is one that can transfer nicely because it can work as some of the, some of the basic academics that students are going to use as they go into college or universities.
Anyone else have anything on that? All right, now roll call, please.
Essing?
Yes.
Knopf singer?
Yes.
Butler?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
McNabb?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Warren?
Yes.
All right, the next one is approve bus bids, which I think we all.
Yes.
Knopstinger?
Yes.
Butler?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
McNabb?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Warren?
Yes.
Essig?
Yes.
All right. The next one is approve bus bids, which I think we all have all of these different buses and costs and whatever. I don't think I need to read all those necessarily.
No, you don't.
So I'm just going to ask the board agree to enter to a three-year lease agreement with Big West Transit for the, for the bus leases as presented. Do we have a motion for that?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All right. Any comments on that? Or we're not buying one?
No, no. This is all lease. And it was a really interesting bid open. You know, we have one group show up and present a bid that had nothing in it. So it was really interesting.
Yep.
This also was reviewed in the finance committee meeting this morning.
And I think we talked about it before, that we're going to get this one gas bus in case of really cold weather. We make sure we've got something in the line.
And it's cheaper.
Yeah.
There you go.
It's always nice to not have a breakdown every two.
I haven't actually got some. So, all right. Any anything else on the buses?
I just, Mr. Reiser did a tremendous job reviewing all the bids, putting them together. And then after we got the bids, I want to give recognition to Mr. Reiser for that.
Thank you. Nothing else? We have a roll call.
McNabb?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Warren?
Yes.
Essig?
Yes.
Knopstinger?
Yes.
Butler?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
All right. Motion passes. Onto number four, approve First Midstate to begin the
refunding process of the 2018 series bonds. Do we have a motion to approve First Midstate?
I vote.
Second. All right. Any discussion? I vote.
What this action item is, it's not committing the district to do anything, not to take other than engage First Midstate and Chapman and Cutler to give them the green light to put together a proposal for the possible refunding, which is, it's the same as doing a refinance on, on the 2018 series bonds. And so they'll, after tonight, I'll let Mr. Pastores know and if it gets approved, and they'll start that process. You know, he said, we looked at some potential savings in about 300 to 350,000. Yeah. Hopefully 350. Because I think the minimum, we talked about a minimum tentatively was 350, 350,000. If it's less than that, and that's after all costs are paid because they're embedded within the structure and restructuring.
What, I had a couple of questions. One, so this is not a commitment on our part. We're just going to see what they present to us.
That is correct.
And that will include the cost, because we don't know what their charges are yet.
They, they fold their costs into the refinance process.
But I mean, there's still a cost. So I'd like to know what that is. I mean, just because it's all in there, I'd like a breakdown of the percentage that we're actually paying to them. Because I think for me going forward, myriad other bonds, look at the future, be competitive. And we, do we ever look at anybody besides First Midstate for this?
First Midstate has been a company that we've used, our bonding agents. And there's another, you know, there's other opportunities. Stiefel is another bonding agent that we could go through. And then some districts have extended agreements with Morton Community Bank. They've also gotten into the lending.
I mean, do we ever do that, just to keep them competitive?
You know, we've, well, we looked at, Dr. Freeman and I went and met with, you know, the bank. There's, there's definitely some upsides and some downsides when you go with a, with a bank. The downside is, is all of the reporting, that consolidation report and there's, that I'll be giving to our finance committee as we roll into the next year, that is all handled by First Midstate. And it is a tremendous amount of work that has to be provided to people that, you know, are purchasing the bonds. I, I don't know, I don't think.
I know. Not to, I'm just, I mean, I just wondered, First Midstate, I know, has been good to us, but I feel like every so often it's good to people in fact and make sure that they don't just think that they've got our business without any questions asked.
And, and that has happened in other districts where, you know, they'll have a bond issue with First Midstate and then maybe change to another one.
Or give them a chance to be competitive and say, well, you know, we'd like to stay with you, but we might be able to get a little cheaper here. So.
And some of it's the money, but some of it is also what Dr. Sandy talked about. You want to make sure that you have the support that we get through them. Some bonding agents will do it, some will not. And you might be saving some money over here, but you're spending it in personnel costs as we grind through all of those reports.
And for something, this is not, not a big, but if we start looking at a whole bunch of other stuff, like I said, I feel it's a good idea to make sure we're getting a good deal. Mr. Pastores, he did qualify all of our questions that we had. They're very knowledgeable. So, and he's done a good job. I don't know if he's deftly inviting, but he's not. I just want to make sure we're not just.
From time to time.
Good to keep you.
Yep. To make sure they're kind of in line with.
Right. What everybody else is doing. Because pretty soon you kind of get in the habit of just go to the same people and not really check them. Okay. Any other questions? If not, roll call. Butler?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
McNabb?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Warren?
Yes.
Essig?
Yes.
Knopstinger?
Yes.
Butler?
Yes.
All right. Motion passes. Onto five, approve proposed 2020 tax levy and truth and taxation certification.
Okay. I put this together. This went through the finance committee. Jake, I think you're probably the only one that hasn't seen this presentation. Everyone else has seen it multiple times. So.
You aren't there. We don't have to.
So I'm going to fly through. There's the agenda. And then these are all the definitions. It's out there. So I'm going to get through to where we get to the 2020 levy. And then we only have a couple of slides to hit. So the CPI was at 2.3%. What you have there is the EAV that comes from Gary Twist, who has done a commendable job in estimating that along with the new property. So those are the values that go into the formula. And so back in November, we did some estimates and at a, you know, estimated tax rate of 2.71, that's, that's an overinflated estimate because we don't want to leave dollars on the table when we're doing the tax levy. It would yield $13,905,000. We will not receive $13,905,000. We'll receive less than that. And then, as you can see, we've got our bond and interest payment. That is, that's done on behalf of the district by the county. Okay? And so that number, that number actually comes from First Midstate. They send that on in. Okay? And so when we do a 19 to 20 comparison, this is what we levied last year compared to what we're levying this year. These aren't the actual numbers. So these are, keep in mind, these are inflated numbers. And so as you can, you know, I want to point out to the board, the estimated EAV only went up just about $400,000. And so we're seeing that EAV kind of level off, which in Washington is still better than a lot of the other surrounding communities where their EAVs have started to drop. You can see the estimated new property. Now, I do track all the bid per, or bid applications for permits. And, and I'll have that rounded out once we get through the fiscal, or excuse me, the calendar year. But I've noticed some, you know, quite a few, you know, bid permits that have come in this last year. And so when we take a look at where we were last year to this year, you see our ask is about $400,000 more on this year's levy. One of the reasons why we're asking for that much more is, you know, our special ed costs have gone up with that. So total ask is $50,369,000. And, you know, that's, that's more than what we had asked last year. But keep in mind, we will not realize those full values. So that's it for the presentation. Jake, I'll be happy to go through that in greater detail if you'd like.
Okay.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions or comments? Very nicely put together, Dr. Sandy.
And I think it is out there on the website. I thought I looked it out there.
Yeah, it is. It's out there. It's gotten a lot of hits. Everybody's.
A lot of people can't sleep this time of year.
Almost.
We should have put it.
Like intermission, you could watch this tax levy. All right. There's nothing else to add? A motion to approve the proposed tax levy and truth and taxation certification as recommended?
So moved.
Second. Motion is second. Anything else? All right. Roll call.
Knopstinger?
Yes.
Butler?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
McNabb?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Warren?
Yes.
Essig?
Yes.
Knopstinger?
Yes.
Butler?
Yes.
All right. Motion passes. Onto five, approve proposed 2020 tax levy and truth and taxation certification.
Okay. I put this together. This went through the finance committee. Jake, I think you're probably the only one that hasn't seen this presentation. Everyone else has seen it multiple times. So.
Jake, if you aren't there, we don't have to.
So I'm going to fly through. There's the agenda. And then these are all the definitions. It's out there. So I'm going to get through to where we get to the 2020 levy. And then we only have a couple of slides to hit. So the CPI was at 2.3%. What you have there is the EAV that comes from Gary Twist, who has done a commendable job in estimating that along with the new property. So those are the values that go into the formula. And so back in November, we did some estimates and at a, you know, estimated tax rate at 2.71, that's, that's an overinflated estimate because we don't want to leave dollars on the table when we're doing the tax levy. It would yield $13,905,000. We will not receive $13,905,000. We'll receive less than that. And then, as you can see, we've got our bond and interest payment. That is, that's done on behalf of the district by the county. Okay? And so that number, that number actually comes from First Midstate. They send that on in. Okay? And so when we do a 19 to 20 comparison, this is what we levied last year compared to what we're levying this year. These aren't the actual numbers. So these are, keep in mind, these are inflated numbers. And so as you can, you know, I want to point out to the board, the estimated EAV only went up just about $400,000. And so we're seeing that EAV kind of level off, which in Washington is still better than a lot of the other surrounding communities where their EAVs have started to drop. You can see the estimated new property. Now, I do track all the bid per, or bid applications for permits. And, and I'll have that rounded out once we get through the fiscal, or excuse me, the calendar year. But I've noticed some, you know, quite a few, you know, bid permits that have come in this last year. And so when we take a look at where we were last year to this year, you see our ask is about $400,000 more on this year's levy. One of the reasons why we're asking for that much more is, you know, our special ed costs have gone up with that. So total ask is $50,369,000. And, you know, that's, that's more than what we had asked last year. But keep in mind, we will not realize those full values. So that's it for the presentation. Jake, I'll be happy to go through that in greater detail if you'd like.
Okay.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions or comments? Very nicely put together, Dr. Sandy.
And I think it is out there on the website. I thought I looked it out there.
Yeah, it is. It's out there. It's gotten a lot of hits. Everybody's.
A lot of people can't sleep this time of year.
Almost.
We should have put it.
Like intermission, you could watch this tax levy. All right. There's nothing else